The first week of May.
Okay, I'm recording. Call this meeting to order, joint meeting of DPW, subcommittee and town council, Tuesday, April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, six P M. in the Veterans Room. Roll call, Councilor Stevens. System members, Lozo.
Present.
Spleen.
Present.
Orketti is here. And we're still waiting on Dow. Uh, agenda item number three, consider an approved joint DPW Town Council meeting minutes of March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Check it.
Everybody have a chance to look at them?
Yep.
Everything okay?
Yep.
Yeah, the only, the only comment I have is just consistency in terms of using names, first names, last names, titles. I don't care what system you use.
All right. Right, all those in favor? Citizens Forum, anybody want to speak about it any time? George, Mary, no?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
To follow up on the last meeting, um, Phil was here and I don't know if you've had a chance to, to look at it, Rich, um, and I asked Phil about the, uh, about the handicap ramp here in Town Hall and he said he would look into it. And I don't know if you've had a chance to talk to him or look at that.
We did have a discussion about it, yeah, last week, I believe, um, he was looking at options of getting people to maybe bid it. I believe there was some money that was put aside for it.
Yeah, like they didn't ask or something like that.
But there was something holding that up and I don't remember what it was.
Tank. Yeah, there's, there's an old tank.
It might have been the tank issue. It was, uh, figuring out what we had to get for permitting or whatever for removal. Uh, it might, that might not have been, it might have been something else, but I'll, I'll check into it.
Okay. I know that's been internal for everyone.
All right, Elsa.
Yeah.
Kevin.
You know if they confirmed that account number of money that I brought up about that at that meeting with Phil? That there was ninety-nine thousand plus put aside in two thousand and eighteen?
I do believe so, yes. And that, that was part of that conversation.
I think I'm done with this. Okay.
Good, all right. All right, agenda item number five, review discuss a transfer for forty-five thousand for our number six-one-four-five-zero-dash-five-eight-three-zero-zero-zero-dash-nine-one-two-five-oh. Water Capital Reserve to six-one-zero-four-five-zero-dash-five-eight-three-zero-zero-zero-dash-two-three-five-eight-zero. Capital, Water Capital System to pay for unexpected emergency repairs at two separate emergency power generators and to cover large stock purchases for the remainder of the fiscal year and entertain a motion to town council.
Thank you.
That's me, it's great.
So, uh, Mr. Burnight, go ahead, want to speak about this? Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Maybe Steve would.
Steve would like to do it, go ahead.
I'd like to refer to Steve Burnight, our water partner.
Sure, so, uh, our capital account two-three-five-eight-oh is where we only purchase all of our large stock water meters, the gate valves, pipe, um, brass, uh, larger style inventory, as well as pay for capital items in the system such as generator repairs. Uh, this year, due to few different factors such as, such as inflation, not only inflation, uh, that account is not getting enough money for the rest of the fiscal year. Uh, as noted in the agenda item, we did have two costly generator emergency repairs lately. One at the main water treatment plant on Breckneck Road and one at the Roosevelt Ave pump station. There were fairly substantial emergency repairs of these two diesel generators. So as of this fiscal month, the account would be, uh, used up funds that are available. So we asked for a transfer out of the in-capital reserve account that we save every year and we're asking for this transfer and move into systems that we can use to fund it through the end of the season, end of this fiscal year. Um, it's, and it's not one of the situations where we want to spend forty-five thousand dollars. It's just, just make sure we can fund it for the rest of the year and anything that doesn't get used up would go back to water treatment earnings at the end of the year.
Any questions? Go ahead.
What actually caused the problem?
For the.
On the generator?
Yeah, so the generator at Breckneck Road, um, is a very large Detroit diesel generator and unexpectedly the fan on the front of the engine actually failed at speed and went through the radiator.
That's like.
Um, it's not something you would normally PM or check. We, we run the thing weekly.
Yeah.
To check for pressure stool levels, visual inspection. There was a hairline crack in the radiator, uh, in the fan and centrifugally it exploded out.
Oh wow.
It actually almost put a hole through the cabinet and broke the radiator. A radiator loan was nearly five thousand dollars. The generator at Roosevelt Ave, um, is a twenty-five-year-old, uh, Olympic generator made from the U K and the diesel, uh, diesel motors run a mechanical pump for fuel pressure for the injectors. The injector pump failed. We went to go run it during our weekly test and it would start, install. We called in our, our company to look at it and they diagnosed it as a bad high lift injector pump. That was also on several thousand dollars just from the pump.
So are these, um, how long do you figure these repairs will last? Is it, do, are we going to need to actually get new generators and really?
It's, it's, I'm glad you asked that because this week I had, uh, our service company come out and they did an evaluation of each generator and I'm asking them to itemize it out by expectancy for serviceability along the parts that would be available because all these generators are approximately the same age.
Yeah, that's right.
So if we need to start budgeting for them, capital, we need to change them out in a, in a rotating basis. I want to start getting that in my five-year capital plan now.
That would make sense because I know, I know generators take some time to develop.
Over a year, yeah, yeah.
There's a fairly large backlog on these things.
If, if parts are going to be available, there's not a problem with keeping them and maintaining them and living with the occasional, you know, repair. But if they're going to become the issue to get parts altogether, then we need to set ourselves up for, uh, the future.
How many generators do you have in the system?
It's three, four, five, s- I want to say six generators total, the three booster stations, the main filter plant, then some crossroads, uh, actually the seven, there's one at the, uh, Commercial Drive Mass Ave site and there's one at the one-sixty-nine pump station, which is that was brand new.
And have the others been checked for conditions lately?
Yeah, we, we had Kraft come out for their, we do, uh, spring PM, which is minor PM.
Yeah.
Then fall PM, which is the major, uh, maintenance. We had to check all fans just in case.
Yeah.
But that was the, one of the filter plant that had the fan fail was the only one of that type is our largest generator. It's a big Detroit diesel generator. The other ones are much smaller, uh, it's really looking at a Ford versus Chevy. But they did look at all fans just in case.
Okay, thanks.
Is there any? Uh, just a couple of questions. Your Water Capital Reserve, you had budgeted a hundred thousand?
Mm-hmm.
And the Water Capital Systems, you had budgeted a hundred and fourteen-seven fifty. I'm just going through last year's budget. You have a lot of capital budgets, so many of them, it's hard to keep track of them all. Uh, you have one for fire hydrants, valve replacements, ninety thousand, meters, ten thousand.
Yeah, those are the sublines for each capital expense and we approximate what we're going to spend each year. It'll total up for like systems. It'll be the large stock here meters. And we estimate where our expenses will be for each one, which comes to a tally for that particular capital line item. Like your second one, equipment, which is two-three-five-eight-one, you'll see we have the, the mini excavator in there or the, of the brush head and.
Hundred thousand.
Yeah, and so those subtotals come up to what each capital line is going to hold within it.
And then you have equipment capital, a hundred and fifty, plant capital, fifty-five.
Good.
Tech capital, four, four-eleven-five, reservoir dam capital, inventory, twelve thousand. So you have a lot of capital accounts, but yet you run out of money in, in your, uh, capital systems to.
It just, it just depends on how you're spending money in that particular year. This year we happen to spend a lot in large stock. And like I said, the meter prices have gone through the roof. We've installed three times as many water meters as we normally would due to expansion of the system, new construction, um, certain amount of meter failed. We had actually a lot of meters that failed during that one cold snap in February. A lot of people, cold basements and meters would split. They, they pay for those meters because it's their fault when split and you still have to purchase them, which is out of the operating budget. We break up our capital in so many different line items because in the past, the council wanted a little bit of accountability or you spending it in systems and filter plant, but they didn't want it in one just number that we called capital.
Yeah.
So that's why you see all the separate line items, the way they laid out that way.
So is it necessary to, to reserve a hundred thousand every year in, in capital reserve?
It's best practice, um, D E P and, and rate study companies generally recommend it. So say you have a, a massive water main break or God forbid some kind of other emergency where you have to, let's just say buy bottled water or something crazy like that, you would come out of your emergency fund. Um, D E P always asks us when they do their sanitary survey, what is your in-capital emergency fund? And then what is your retained earnings amount of money you have to make sure you've got a good base to handle short-term and long-term emergencies?
Okay, the only thing I don't care for is the word et cetera. I, you've got that a lot here tonight. I don't care for that.
Yeah.
That's just open-ended now. You could spend it on anything you want, so.
As long as it meets the qualification of large systems capital, like, like your brass. I didn't want to list out every single large stock component we buy, um, but.
Well, you and my drone.
Oh my, good.
Right, but if we were my drone, we would come out and quit the capital. But yeah, not water would fall into that large capital, which is in the budget you're referring to, it'd be any of those line items would be purchased with that money. So rather than list them all out, I did use et cetera, so.
Well, I mean, if you're, if there's something else you wanted to bring forward, you would just come back to us and say, now I need this, so.
And basically it's to fund the account through the year.
Yeah.
So I can't tell you if it's going to be for a one hydrant, ten meters, or a three hydrants and four meters, or, you know what I mean? It's, it's to fund the account like I would normally operate the water system.
All right.
But I understand what you're saying, Council.
I really don't care for last end of the year transfers. I just don't care for them, but I understand why you need it, so. Anything else?
Passes to you. To follow up on that is, so are you figuring that, uh, I'm assuming most of this forty-five grand is going to go to the energy generators? Uh, but as far as the, uh, the stock purchases, are you basically planning not just for the rest of this fiscal year, but basically the rest of the calendar year?
No, that's this fiscal year. I don't.
I mean, it's a month, we've got a month and a half left.
Or careful I phrase this. I don't believe that we're going to, we're going to spend a good portion of it. Uh, and I didn't want to come back at the end for another little transfer and then if we don't use it, it all goes back to retained earnings regardless, whether it sits in reserve or sits in capital.
Right, yeah.
Uh, it's, I know we, at the end of the year, but also when we get to the end of the year, the more transfers are frowned upon if we can help it.
Yeah.
Uh, this would just move some money from here instantly usable. We don't use it, which I don't expect they'll spend at all. It's going to go back into the bank like it normally would. Like, what if it was still sitting in reserve?
Yeah.
I'm not going to, I know people think that while municipalities do this on budgets, I'm not going to blow this money at the end of the year because I haven't.
Yeah. I mean, in practice then, from what you, what the, the stuff that you have listed there as, as items that you'd be likely to get, um, what kind of, I mean, how often do you need to replace a fire?
Well, for instance, that's a good question. On the South Street project, there was a change made where we added two additional fire hydrants. Rather than come back for a change order and then go through that process, it's easier to have the contractor install the hydrants and you supply them. Because when we looked at it hydraulically, we said, man, we could really, for maintenance purposes, use a hydrant here to flow this part of the system where we never had one before. The same thing just came up on West Street where they installed it today in front of the school apartment building at the bottom of the hill. We are supplying with them that hydrant. And that's on top of hydrants we normally change out when we find some of the older ones, like we're doing flushing right now. We broke a few hydrants the other night because they're from nineteen-twenty. So we're not going to, you can't get by parts for them.
I'm sure you can.
So we're going to be doing a rash of hydrant replacements coming up in the next thirty days.
Thanks.
Elsa.
Hydrants are fairly expensive nowadays.
I'm not surprised. Yeah, anything metal is pretty expensive these days.
Councilor Loz.
Steve, if there's a surplus in an account, wouldn't it be fair to say that you'd want to invest in more stock such as hydrants and meters for the, for the following year?
If we thought that prices were going to continue to go up, we could invest in more inventory at the end of the year with additional funds. Uh, that's something I can discuss with.
Well, I would suggest that because I don't know if they're going to open it down, but.
Yeah.
It's money that's going to go back into the interest card that you don't have to use next year.
We definitely wouldn't be using that money on consumables like throw, uh, there would be capital purchases like, like a hydrant, things that are going to own for a long time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Elsa.
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor? Agenda item number six, review discuss a transfer total of four thousand from number zero-zero-one-four-nine-nine-dash-five-two-one-zero-zero-zero-dash-zero-four-nine-nine. Electricity DPW Operations, three thousand four hundred to zero-zero-one-four-nine-nine-dash-five-two-one-zero-zero-zero-dash-zero-four-three-one. Electricity, traffic and school lights and six hundred dollars to zero-zero-one-one-four-nine-nine-dash-five-two-one-zero-zero-zero-dash-zero-zero-one. Electricity various locations to cover national grid and solar invoices through the end of the fiscal year until solar credits are redistributed. Entertain a motion.
Check it.
Go ahead. This will be.
I think this is going to cover that, this transfer and the next one. So, uh, I was, actually we just found out about this on Friday and unfortunately didn't have a lot of time to investigate the background because we were busy trying to, uh, figure out how I was going to do payroll today with my assistant, Alan DeGee. But, uh, so I'm told that the current electrical account is, uh, close to being overrun with the charges um, and that there is going to be insufficient funds to cover the electrical fees for the rest of the year. So they're pulling money from accounts on hand that have funding still in them before the, that we can use for that without having to come back and ask for more funding to, basically trying to utilize funds on hand. Why, why the account is short is the question that I'm sure you want to know and I, I don't know the answer to that just yet.
Okay.
That will be something that I will know before Thursday night's budget meeting.
All right. Questions? Anybody?
I just want to comment that actually, this, this is actually not all that unusual with the solar invoices. They tend to be fairly slow coming. We've seen, we've seen something like this pretty much at the end of the year every year, so. It's, it's, it's a kind of inconvenient thing, but it's not unusual.
Like I said, I wasn't able to familiarize myself with the, with, with the situation due to other circumstances.
Okay, nothing else? All those in favor? Agenda item number seven, review discuss transfer for three thousand one hundred from zero-zero-one-four-nine-nine-dash-five-two-one-zero-zero-zero-dash-oh-four-two-five. Electricity Town Hall to zero-zero-one-four-nine-nine-dash-five-two-one-zero-zero-zero-dash-oh-four-three-one. Electricity, traffic and school lights to cover national grid and solar invoices through the end of the fiscal year until solar credits are redistributed. Entertain a motion to Town Council. Motion.
Check it.
For approval and authorize a town manager to sign related paperwork. So go ahead. Same, well, this is the same thing.
Same, same explanation as the last one.
All right. Any questions? Nothing? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. Want to sit up here? It's from the record.
Joe, you look better right here.
Council Dow has.
Has taken, taken charge.
Thank you.
All right, agenda item number eight, review discuss a transfer for five hundred dollars from zero-zero-one-four-nine-nine-dash-five-four-eight-zero-zero-zero. M, M V part and accessories to zero-zero-one-four-nine-nine-dash-five-five-eight-seven-zero-zero. Parts and non-vehicle accessories to fund needed small equipment purchases. Entertain a motion to Town Council to approve and authorize a town manager to sign.
Check it.
Mr. Burnight?
So for this one, this is another internal transfer from an account for, uh, basically vehicle, uh, repairs within our facility, taking some funding from that and moving it over to, uh, small equipment repairs. So I, the first time I read it, I, I had to ask, uh, I kind of misunderstood how it was read. I thought we were buying something, but apparently, uh, it is, I, I read it again and it's, you know, small equipment needs. It's, um, just due to the repair costs of some of the equipment that, uh, we've been fixing regarding parks and ground stuff, lawn mowers and such. Apparently there was some, some issues going into the winter where some things cost a little extra money in parts because of rising costs on things. And now that account's pretty low and we need to, uh, make sure we can make it through the end of the year. So that was, that was the explanation that I got for that.
Okay, any questions?
I have a question in regards to this transfer and the next transfer. The balance in this first one is saying is eleven thousand nine, uh, eleven thousand five ninety-six twenty-two. According to the budget numbers that we have for Thursday night, the number that I came up was eight thousand dollars. So there's a discrepancy there of almost thirty-six hundred dollars and on the next one is a discrepancy of almost twelve thousand dollars difference. I don't know if there's anybody here that can answer that question.
I don't have the current budget report with me.
I do.
So which one was, uh?
So if you want to take that first one.
All right, so what account? The, uh, motor vehicle parts?
Yeah, if you go to motor vehicle parts, the, uh, fifty-four eight thousand.
Okay.
We budgeted eighty-one thousand dollars and supposedly we spent seventy-two nine eighty-seven eighty-five. So if you deduct those two numbers, I come up with eight thousand twelve dollars and fifteen cents, not eleven thousand five hundred ninety-six.
What was the second number of what? It's currently expended?
Seventy-two thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven eighty-five.
Okay, and what is, uh?
And we're being told that the balance in that account is eleven thousand five ninety-six twenty-two.
Kevin, what, what was your budget thing generated?
Yeah, my. That was what I was going to question.
Right, so.
Right, so.
That is.
We have one that's March twenty-seventh and then we have this one here that is, the budget was the twenty-seventh and this is the fourteenth, the request.
Okay.
But the next one's the one that really is the big one that I'm curious about, almost a twelve thousand dollar difference in seventeen days when we've only spent sixteen thousand dollars of that thirty-eight thousand in ten months and now all of a sudden we spent twelve thousand dollars in seventeen days.
Right, I would have to, to answer that question, I'd have to run a report on how many purchase orders were, um, approved over. And I know there has been quite a few and some of them were, were older that I had to go through, um, and approve because nobody's paid them.
I was just curious because it was.
I don't want to tell you that that's exactly the answer, but, you know, I, I will look into it tomorrow to make sure that, you know, I, I want to get all of the numbers. So, you know, that's, that's for that one and then I want to write down for the, uh, for the next.
Next transfer.
The next one, just so, just so I have it so I can compare.
For the next one, we had thirty-eight thousand budgeted.
Okay.
And according to our paperwork, there was fifteen nine twenty-one fifty spent. Which should leave a balance of fourteen thousand seventy-eight fifty. And there, finance is trying to say there's only twenty-two twenty-five.
So if you could look into that before the council meeting, I think we should probably vote to send it up.
I agree.
And you could get an answer for that for.
Just, you know, sometimes in munis, when something is on P O status, it can linger between spent and unspent and it can skew the number a little bit. Sometimes it'll end up in what's called the conference call.
Yeah.
And it can skew the numbers a little bit. It's not, and it depends when the payments hit. It can really, um, especially with some of the staffing issues getting some, some of the bills out. You'll have a, a lot of payments hit all at once.
Yeah.
Being, you know, a hundred and twenty days out on something, sometimes they can skew the numbers.
No, I understand that. It just, it just kind of caught me off guard that we spent sixteen thousand in ten months and then twelve thousand in like fourteen days.
Yeah.
That's what caught me.
What was the amount that you said you're, you're told that you have for that account?
Two thousand two hundred and twenty-five. That's the big one. That's the amount that's almost a twelve thousand dollar discrepancy.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Nothing else? All those in favor? Thank you. Uh, agenda item number nine, review and discuss a transfer two thousand from zero-zero-one-four-nine-nine-dash-five-three-zero-zero-zero-zero. Specialized services to zero-zero-one-four-nine-nine-dash-five-three-three-one-zero-zero. Maintenance on trees to fund needed small equipment purchases. Entertain a motion to Town Council. And authorize a town manager to sign related paperwork. Um, just, we've already talked about this one as well.
Well, this one, the, uh, the detail is, is wrong.
Yeah.
It's incorrect.
Yeah.
So this is the same detail for the last transfer. What that should read is that, uh, obviously we need more money for treeless for this year. Uh, I did check it today. We have eight hundred dollars remaining in the account. And I was out this morning with Phil and we looked at two more trees and possibly a third that are within our right of way that have been reported that are, that are dead and in danger of, uh, damaging somebody's property. So now we're liable to cut them down. So the average cost per tree, depending on the size, obviously, that we've been spending is between eighteen hundred and twenty-two dollars per.
So this will be updated for the town council meeting?
Yes.
All right. The other thing I just wanted to add is, as on the last one, as with this one, if you could take the word et cetera out of there, I just don't care for putting that word in there. It just gives you too much leeway on what you can spend the money on.
The, the, the detail here is wrong anyway.
Yeah, the detail on this one is wrong, you know.
Julian Els.
That's right.
Et cetera, et cetera is not a line item.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
From the town manager's budget documents, so you'd have to get the town manager to eliminate the word et cetera.
It has been eliminated for most of them, but not on these transfers tonight, so. All right, anybody else? Nothing? All those in favor? Thank you. Uh, agenda item number ten, review discuss a transfer for four hundred dollars from zero-zero-one-four-nine-nine-dash-five-one-four-one-zero-zero. Longevity to zero-zero-one-four-nine-nine-five-six-nine-zero-zero-zero. License permits and taxes to cover additional expenses for new hires. Entertain a motion to Town Council.
Check it, check it.
We didn't go that far.
Go ahead.
So this one I asked about, um, today, actually, uh, obviously we have, what is it, five new employees that are under a year. Um, and a lot of extra expenses for hoisting licenses, uh, license renewals, things that we typically pay for. This was, uh, the, I, when this was going to come up to be put in for a transfer last week, I had Phil go around through the files to make sure that what we were going to need to get us through the year, who had, who had, you know, Spire license coming out or reals or what have you. So this was the number that they came up with based off of what we need to get through the end of the year.
Okay.
Any questions?
I'd just like to clarify, how many people in DPW still get longevity?
That are. But this was, I know that.
A few, yeah.
That's why I guess.
This, the extra funding was take, was pulled, was going to be pulled out of somebody that is no longer with us yet. So that, that, that money was still in there.
Because if you wanted the budget document, it lists each guy at this long.
Yeah, it died.
He was looking for the short answer.
Yeah.
All right. Any other, anything else? Oops, all those in favor? Uh, agenda item number eleven, discuss Ellis Road. So I put that on there just so if we need an update on what's going on with Ellis Road. If anything is going on.
Can you get it to that? Those are all my bad.
If nothing's going on with it, then, you know, just let us know.
At the moment, we are, we spent some time up there ditching out the, uh, shoulder of the road. Uh, DPW has been doing that with the, uh, assistance of the water. Uh, DPW has been doing that with the, uh, assistance of the water department's mini excavator. Um, typically had two to three guys up there, uh, clearing some trees, taking care of some of that hands-on work so we don't have to outsource it. Um, it's looking like, uh, that's probably going to be one of the next things on our head list to do is to get that road taken care of. Unless somebody can make a value, uh, fight as to why we shouldn't, but I don't see that being an issue. It's already been said, this is what we're going to do, so. Um, working on, uh, making agreements and scheduling with the contractor to take care of that. My thoughts at this point in time is we're going to mill off the road surface and fix any issues that we find and repay with.
Alright.
Not gonna, not gonna widen it. Um, there's been some questions from some of the residents. They, they suggested making it a one-way. I did tell them that I was not opposed to that, but it wasn't my decision. Um, I said if they could get the backing of all of the residents on, uh, that section of the road, um, that they could bring it to traffic commission and it could be discussed, uh, but that's up to them.
Okay.
They have a question. Jim, do you have some sort of timeframe when the mechanic and south, uh, mechanic and North Street might, might happen? I'm just a little worried about all these projects going on.
Let me answer that because that's, that's kind of connected to the same. So all of that was all on board and we had that scheduled to start within the next, what, week or so?
Yeah.
Um, Jim actually had kind of pulled, made some bunch of calls and pulled some stuff together to get on people's schedules and get, you know, get his contractors some time to do their work. That has been halted as of Friday afternoon. Apparently National Grid failed to finish their gas main upgrade on North Street. Going from the end of Crystal Street down North Street to Mechanic and then north on Mechanic to Bridge. Uh, I believe from what I've seen so far that all of the reporting on our end was there. It was an oversight by National Grid and now they're planning on coming in and doing that work. So I'm waiting to hear back from them. I had the conversation Friday afternoon. I followed that up with an email to our area rep. So he could pass along that email and my concern to his superiors to find out what was going on. Obviously that was Friday. Today's Monday. I haven't heard anything back yet. If I don't hear anything back by, say, Thursday, I'll return another phone call and an email and try to, you know, get this to, at least have some sort of an, an idea about what their thought process is. But I, I don't want to pave the road if they're going to come back in and dig it up, so.
Right.
I mean, and it, and it covers both roads, so.
Go ahead, let's talk about that.
So with the gas company coming in now for that North Street extension is that, are you nervous or anything about the one they're supposed to do on West Street with that project going on?
Well, that's, that's another, that's going to be another conversation, part of the same as far as, uh, setting up a meeting to go over what they have on their proposal for not just this year, but if there's anything else coming up in the next few years that they're planning on doing at the moment in town. That way we have that forecast, so it's not interfering with something else. And obviously this is very new to me, you know, in dealing with them. Uh, this was my first, uh, input with them, so, uh, my intentions are to establish a, an open relationship so we can continuously have these conversations and this doesn't happen again.
I'm just kind of, once all these projects start going, the, the traffic pattern in this town.
Yeah.
That was my being.
Yeah, no, I, I know there was some discussion about them coming in for West Street and, uh, they were, they were, they were trying to schedule being there in a similar fashion or a similar timeframe to the, you know, the wa, the water and the gas kind of going at the same time. We were discussing a little bit of that because they're both kind of starting at different ends, but what would happen once they become, if they get close to one another with traffic patterns and such, especially with the school, so that's going to be part of my conversation.
Thank you.
I'm going to let, uh, Mr. Piyavi speak.
Well, we have a, a little glitch too on the north side of Ellis Road. And I don't know how much, if there's any changes or what we want to do there, but there's, there's a low point where water crosses the road. It's a big ice problem in the wintertime. Runs through a guy's yard. I, I was able to find the owner's, uh, contact information and contacted him. Fell through the cracks and between everybody. He told me that, you know, the town had to put some of its salt there for ice and ruin this well.
Jim, what side is the north side?
The south side. No, no, it's just.
The old town side, right, that's not that.
That's right.
Just wanted to make sure we're on the same page.
Yeah, so it's, when you look at first hill, there's a dip, doesn't have our pure post the road, so, um, the only place to have a drainage outfall would be across his property. I talked, I spoke with him today. He's very receptive to it. But that will require an easement survey, none of which will be fast. I don't know if it's wise to maybe, if we could get some kind of right-of entry thing with the formality to follow so we can work out. I don't know. I mean, that's, that's rich island, figured that out. But it's one of the, probably the worst spots on the road. So that, our hands seem to be sort of tight everywhere except I guess the south side of Ellis Road.
Pretty much at the moment. And I would prefer to fix that water issue before we pave that section of road.
Yeah.
I mean, I, worst case scenario, depends on what we want to do. If we want to pave the south end of, of Ellis, you know, while we are kind of putting things in motion to get something done, at least to save face.
Yeah.
There's nothing saying that we can't combine, um, the, the north section from Gelfwood to the town line with maybe doing that section of Gelfwood from Torrey Road up to that point, that is absolutely horrible.
And in, in my, you know, in my opinion too, it, you know, judging the conditions of the roads, on the north side of the road, there's like two or three bad spots. And the rest of it's in much better shape than, than, than Gelfwood. I mean, maybe we should just, you know, do a couple of short sections in that pipe on the north side and put the money into Gelfwood or Dennis and Drive or something.
I don't disagree with that, except I will point out there is one problem that I've noticed with, aside from the fact that the road's a garbage. One of the things that I have noticed with driving through town and seeing some of the prior repairs.
Sure.
The whole town is patchwork. Anything that has been fixed is a piece this big. And that bothers me to no extent.
Well, he's right, he's right.
You know, I, I know, uh, obviously we have to do what we have to do when it's equitable or, you know, if there is a serious issue that has to be fixed. But I think that moving forward, we have to find a way and obviously funding is going to be the biggest, biggest hurdle in all of that. But finding a way to develop a successful road program in town where we can actually pave the road or the whole street or at least a, a, a valiant section of it as opposed to, you know, doing a patch that's three hundred feet long because that was the worst part of the road. And then you say, okay, well, we paved that road five years ago. No, we paved the path that was, you know, five hundred feet and the road is still another mile and a half long, you know. So just, uh, just something that I wanted to note that I've been seeing in a lot of locations.
Alright, I'm going to go with, uh, Mr. Shenier next. He had his hand up.
A lot of the issues that you look at is the lack of reinforcement from prior years of DPW. Take East Road, I mean Everett Street for instance, in our town by law, it says that laterals, if they're within fifty feet or less of each other, the whole road's supposed to be paved. Well, that didn't happen on, uh, Everett Street with sections of Everett Street that have that fifty foot. And I realized that if they wanted to stick to it, there would be a full road paving for so many. I mean, when they do a, like, South Street for instance, I would hope that National Grid is responsible for the whole road because of the laterals and those kind of things. You know, it's just like the sidewalk repairs, the sidewalk repairs with National Grid digs up the sidewalk repairs. The town by law says they're going to go within the cut of the sidewalk. So if it's a, let's say four by six, all they come in is saw cut, a two by four foot patch. And, and they don't fix it properly. And they also have been asphalt, they can put asphalt down. If you go down Everett Street, I mean, this is the time here, they should be up there digging and, and doing all the machinery work, the whole length of Everett Street. I believe that the project is done and we're going to be in the same situation on Everett Street, uh, where they've just forgotten. And it's, and it's, it's the lack of reinforcement on DPW, prior DPW. So I'm hoping that system of knowledge will be able to address that with NUCO or whoever it is. But, I mean, if you look all over town where NUCO's been, they don't follow the bylaw, plain and simple.
Yep. Alright, we've been talking about this for a year now. Counselor Lozlo?
Exactly. For a year we've been talking about that, NUCO, and everybody's telling the truth about it.
Right.
My, my opinion is finish Ellis Road from one end to the other. Don't cut it off. Don't make one, one section looks a little better. He's right. But I'd say go from one end to the other. Get the east bin, get it done. You concentrate on one road at a time and do it and get it done. And then after, we have to come back to Gelfwood. Gelfwood's a much bigger project and I think that, that would, uh, the money that would be left over affects. Would be like a Band-Aid to it.
Right.
Alright, I'm going to go with Counselor Steve's next.
Um, do you, um, Mr. Reddick, do you think that we, that we'll actually be able to get the, um, North Street and Mechanic Street work done this year with the issues that, uh?
This will be here or calendar year?
Um, well, this ca, well, this, this paving season.
Before winter.
Yeah.
I can answer that once I find out from National Grid where they are at with, when they're going to show back up. That's, that's the answer I'm waiting for now. So basically, I haven't made any decisions on what's going to happen next because I have to get that answer. Once I know that, then I can say yes. But if it's, if, if for some strange reason they say, well, we're not going to be there until October, then no. Because by the time they're done with their stuff, it's going to be next year.
Yeah.
Because we're not, we're not paving past October.
Oh, I totally understand. That's what I was concerned about. Um, so do you think that maybe it might be, it might make some sense to take the money that you would be spending on those two roads and shift them to some other road, don't be in a similar situation?
Don't even think it. Don't even go there.
The one thing about roads is.
Hold on, hold on.
I'm talking about Gelfwood.
He asked the question some other.
They already took money off of Gelfwood Road and moved it over somewhere else.
I, I want to get, I want to get some road credit done this year. I mean, if we've already had the contract out, we've already got the contract out. Let's figure out something we can get done this year so we don't have to play games with National Grid. Because they're going to, they're going to slow this down.
National Grid's on Ellis Road.
Let's wait and find out.
No, I, I was just saying, I said North there, you're part of the Mechanic.
Let's let him talk to National Grid in there. We'll, we'll bring it up again.
Well, I, I understand where you're going with that and I, I don't disagree, um, you know, as far as the funding that's there, it's, it's, it's funding that is on hand, it's town funding, it's not chapter ninety funding.
Right.
Technically, yes, we could choose to do whatever we wanted with it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we all, we already have a bid for quantities.
Exactly.
You know, so as long as we're working within those quantities, yes, we could. But the question then becomes is how, how many times do you want to move funding around and, you know, take a project that was going to go and then move it someplace else?
Why?
Which is to every, you know, to their, yes, you know, we could get something done. It would be great to do, you know, the upper section of Gelfwood or do, uh, Dennison Drive go high to Hill, which is, you know, that's absolute garbage, but.
I agree.
You know, that, uh, you know, basically, within reason, I'll do whatever you guys want me to do because you, you guys make the rules and the council makes the rules. So if that's the choice that happens, then.
Well, let's wait, let's wait until you hear back from National Grid.
National Grid.
I'm going to go with Counselor Dow yet next. He hasn't spoken yet.
I'm going to check for you, uh, River Street, Grand Street scheduled this year.
What was that?
River, River and Crane. That's a different funding source.
I think that's a CVBP project that, that was something that I believe we have an upcoming meeting on. I haven't been brought up to, uh, to, to date on that project yet. That was, that's one of the things that she's been holding off on throwing at me. But I think we have a meeting scheduled next week for that. And actually Steve and I were also discussing. Yeah.
If I remember correctly, that's scheduled to be paved this year.
I agree with Counselor Steve regarding if we're not going to pave it this year because the product, the, the labor, everything's going up. So use them.
I agree with that.
You know?
I, I do, I do have a, a concern with, uh, upcoming funding. So I, I had a meeting last Thursday with our chapter ninety representative from Masque OT. Uh, this meeting was, uh, within a few days of a meeting that we had downstairs here to go over the, the funding for the tip projects and the East Main Street design for the, that project and talking about timelines for stuff. So I believe it was approved that there would be some money that was going to be utilized from chapter ninety that's going to go towards some of the stuff for the tip project. It was not a huge amount of money. And then there was, we had the discussion, uh, the water department was present, a few of other people and the engineers for the East Main Street design, uh, we had went over the cost analysis for those things and talked about what we had to do to go out to bid for the project. So at the end of the discussion, it was, the project will be ready to go to bid by December of this year. So we can accept bids by January and then award the, the, the project to somebody, you know, in the coming weeks.
Specifically for the tip project, the East Main Street you spoke of?
The East Main Street. So the funding for that project, for the road work portion of the project, is estimated at around one point six million dollars. As I was told, the plans for those funds was going to come from chapter ninety. So after that meeting, I had my meeting with my chapter ninety rep.
Mass Works.
I think, I think that's, I think that covers water and sewer.
Yes.
I don't think that's paving.
The paving and all of that portion of the project, I was told, is planned to come out of our chapter ninety. Currently, right now, we have one point six million dollars in chapter ninety. Minus the money that has been allotted for some, you, some of these other projects. We will get our new allotment as of July, say July one, which is, I believe, four hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. So that's enough money for us to put that project out to bid, plus cover the costs of these other projects. And basically gives us enough money until next July to maybe do some road repairs, not any major paving work. So funding is an issue.
Yep. Alright, who is next? I guess Counselor Lozlo?
Just a quick question, Rich. We're talking about taking money from North Street or Mechanic and putting it somewhere else. Would that have to go out for a rebid?
I would say.
No, no, because we, I don't think so.
You could get a, you, you could do it because, as long as you stayed with, because the bids on those roads are bid as quantities.
So it's a volume bid?
It's a volume bid based on the cost of certain quantities. So as long as you are not increasing any of the quantities and you were staying within that bid spec, you could take that money and move it to another street.
Okay. I can tell you from past experience, they, they, you can add funding to, best of my knowledge, you can exceed the funding as long as we stick to the bid unit prices of the work so long.
Right.
But that, my question, the reason why I brought that up is because we've had, we haven't had good luck. Every time it seems like running into winter, already been paved. And I'd rather stick with what we're doing and get, get Ellis paved, get these, North Street, we get it pretty done. Again, I think it's going to go down away from National Grid. I mean, uh, your explanations are right there, but I just want to know, would the bid process slow down or move? If it, the answer's no, that's good move.
I don't, I don't think so. Well, we would have, obviously at this point, we would want to decide sooner than later if we wanted to, if we were going to move those funds. Obviously, it's not going to happen tonight, but within the next month, so that we could schedule getting those projects done while we still had the money.
Right. You know, from, from my scheduling perspective too, I got to figure out what's going on here. We're going to keep running into roadblocks and then.
Sure, absolutely.
George?
Just two questions. Is there money in the budget, upcoming budget for roads?
The road work and, road improvement plan is in there.
Right, but is this like a million blocks or something that they were going to put in every year or something?
One point five.
Is that in there for this year?
I don't have the budget in front of me, but I believe I did see it in there somewhere.
Alright, and then the other thing is, like North Street, not, North Street and Mechanic Street, because of the delay caused by National Grid, is it potentially going to be they're responsible for increased cost of materials for that project? Because you have to wait till next year. The price is not going down. Are they going to come down? Are they gonna come back and say, okay, here's X amount of dollars towards the road project because of increased costs?
Well, exactly.
Unfortunately, they're gonna laugh at you while they shake your hand.
Because each of, Everestreet, they were supposed to give 45,000 dollars towards that paving project.
Uh, well...
If we did the whole street.
Right, so that would be, that would be money in lieu of...
Right.
So that is, um, we'll just use, uh, we'll use Elm Street as an example. Let's just say they ran a gas line down Elm Street today. And, uh, in the pre-construction meeting, I met with them and I said, uh, well, we wanna pave all of Elm Street. So, uh, instead of you guys coming in and, and milling your half, um, you know, we'll take measurements based off of, you know, laterals and, you know, one full lane for, you know, reclamation, to make it right after they're done. We would come to an agreed upon price prior to their finishing work. And they, instead of them doing that paving to fix what they're supposed to do per contract, we would take a check from them in lieu of them doing that work, so we could add that to our funding, just and do the whole road.
Right.
So that, that's the difference. It's not a, it's not an agreement of, you know, okay, well, you messed up our schedule, so we want you to give us money. So, you know, if we said that to them, they probably never talk to us again.
I can laugh at them. That's what, that's what happened on Main Street.
Alright, so are we okay with this then? Any more questions? Nope. Alright, we'll move on to agenda I number 12, review, discuss the status of the construction inspector position. So, you wanna update us on that? I mean, I, I have talked to you about this, if your, you know, your answer is your answer.
Um, so, to keep it short and simple, I, there was, there was some discussion that was had, um, about, you know, budget conflicts with, uh, you know, for this year.
Right.
Obviously, the town's looking at ways to, to, to save some, some money.
Right.
Uh, I think that position between salary and fringe is probably gonna be a little over 100,000 dollars on the town. And I, I'm not saying that the position is not needed or necessary. I would just be concerned with filling it now, uh, just due to the fact of, what do I have that person do when they're not doing that? I think that, you know, looking down the road, that there has been, I've heard conversation of, okay, well, maybe we need to set up a facility. Somebody needs to oversee all of the falling apart buildings and stuff that we have.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
That is a pretty full-time job, but I think that you could blend a couple of different things into that. But you would also already have to have a department, per se, set up for that. That person could do both, you know, both duties and have a full-time, year-round job. My concern with hiring an administrative staff, bringing them into public works, having them inspect and have, you know, interactions with the permitting and so on and so forth. It's going to be minimal most times of the year, and then very busy for a couple of months, and then what do I do with the rest of the time? Not gonna take that administrative staff, whose, you know, salary, non-union, and put them out on the road with the union guys. It just, that's gonna create more conflict than we really wanna deal with. So I think that the foresight is there to have that there, and I don't, I don't think we should lose that thought process. I just think that in order to do it, we should do it at the right point in time.
And do you think you can do, uh, construction inspection at this time?
That's my intentions. Uh, at the moment, I am concerned with getting somebody else to, you know, fortify the administrative staff at the department, the deputy director. I know that there's currently, I, I think we're still in the process, some, for some reason, of which, which, um, job description we're gonna use for that position. So, I would like to fill that position and, you know, solidify the, 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 the current administrative team at the facility, before adding on extras.
I'm gonna go with Kevin. Okay, Councilor Steve, please.
By the powerful way you just said, so what's your, what's your take on, um, having the deputy director be an engineer versus outsourcing the engineering that you had before?
I think somebody having, the engineer thing is, is, is important in, in a sense, because looking back through the files and, and doing the research at, at the Highway Garage, you know, current ongoing projects and seeing all of the things that Matt did. And wishing that there was some hope of grace, that there was a way to get that guy to come back, which I know isn't gonna happen. But that, you know, that, I think, would solidify everything at the Highway Department right now. And we could just kinda charge forward and do some stuff, you know, losing that person, even though I never got to meet him, just seeing the work that he left behind, I'm sad it did not happen. Um, you know, I, as I said before, if we wanna post the position as it was written, and see if we can get some interest. I mean, right now, we're not doing anything, so, I mean, I, I would, I would rather be doing something than nothing.
Right.
So I'm not opposed to posting the position as it is, and seeing if we can find somebody that has some engineering background, that also, you know... My other thought was maybe, I don't remember the exact wording changes that were in the new proposed, uh, description, but I, I, some of my thoughts to throw into that would be, uh, you know, project management, you know, uh, civil construction, project management background. Anything along those lines, that somebody that had boots-on-the-ground knowledge of, you know, design phases and, you know, carryout of, of construction projects, that is gonna know what's going on. As opposed to, you know, somebody that, that doesn't have any of that. That might be, might be a, you know, a, a 20-year maintainer or something from either another municipal department or whatever. But having somebody that has had that background, um, there, there's other things that you could put in there, that would be like preference to, uh, to try to attract somebody with a certain skillset.
Okay.
But, like I said, I, I, I really kinda wanna move forward with that and, and get something moving, because right now, it's just, it's stalled.
Yeah, I can understand that, because I was thinking that, because I know in Oxford, they recently, they recently went back to having in-house, um, engineering, because they, they had to stop it out for a while, and they found that they weren't just, weren't getting work done, that they didn't get it done, they were having conflict with scheduling and stuff like that. It was just, it was just much more efficient doing it in-house, so...
Right. I think the one thing that we have here that's a lot different, is a lot of, is a lot more infrastructure here than there is in Oxford. Um, you know, we're, we're a bit larger of a town, there's a lot more going on.
Right.
Um, so I will say that, you know, you'll never get away from outsourcing, you know, a, a reasonable portion of that engineering. You know, having somebody with the background and that skillset would be helpful, but I don't think you're gonna save the money by not having to hire engineers.
Okay.
That's good.
That, it takes the, it, it takes the burden off of the town as far as the liability as well, because if we mess it up, it's on us.
True.
If we pay somebody and they mess it up, they get to fix it.
Sure. That's a good argument.
But you have to make sure that it happens.
To be honest with AIA contracts, it'd say that the only skin in the game, the site engineer can have is the value of the design. So there's not that, but, uh, very few towns actually, I totally agree that we, we should try to get somebody with the engineering background to understand this work and the administrative part of it. But very few towns actually do, except for mine, that thinks, actual engineering. And I think a few that are left that do, like, bigger cities that have engineering departments.
Right.
Not, not, you know, who needs a, like, an administrative assistant project manager? Somebody that understands quantities and...
What if we were to try to do that with a multi-town council session? If there are other towns in the area that'll look at it, see if we can do somebody who could do part-time for like two or three towns?
Are you sharing your noise when you were a kid? I think, I, I think, I think somebody could work...
That's what I'm trying to start thinking about, too.
I think somebody could, you know, leak himself, which is, uh, you know...
Alright, thank you, Mr. Reddick.
Thank you, Chair.
You want the camera, you want some?
Yeah. Their construction, uh, inspection.
Yes.
You know, it's a lot of things coming up.
Yes.
And last year, we were behind, because we don't catch up, we're behind, we can't keep up. I know you, you're planning to do that, but you don't think you have enough thing to, uh, focus and manage and get somebody to lease part-time, uh... But I, I understand your concern, the full-time way of, you know, I think it's better to get somebody part-time than, that will help more, because in the past, Heather, she wasn't able to keep up. She's a good person. She, she has some issue here and there, we all have issue here and there. And I think the law on the health, that make her make, look bad. So I'm not sure if you get somebody part-time, maybe that will help you focus on different things, like you don't get, you know, you try to focus on, on construction inspection and all that, and then, and then you'll be behind, and then everybody's gonna be after you for that.
Well, that, that's why, you know, so I, I'm kinda, I don't mind doing office work, and that's a, a large portion of my job, but I always need an escape route to get away from the office to do things. And my background with doing the road construction, usually being the, the, you know, boots-on-the-ground person that's right there making sure it happens the way that I want it done. I'm not gonna be able to give up on that, so I'm, I'm still gonna be involved in it. Whether, you know, whether we did hire, uh, an inspection person or not, I'm still gonna show up on it, on any given job site, every day or every other day, just to see, you know, depending on what the phase of the project is. Knowing what's going on, dealing directly with the, either the engineer that's onsite, or the, the foreman from the crew or whatnot. My thoughts about solidifying the current, uh, team that we have, you know, we had myself, we have, if we had a qualified assistant director that could, kind of, like Jimmy said, kind of, an assistant to help with some of the office stuff that maybe I don't have to do. So that I could do a little bit more of the directing portion and being, you know, more involved in the, in the water department, even though Steve does a lot there. Definitely being more involved in the, in the sewer department, and, and knowing what's, what's ticking in each place. And I think that's important for somebody in my position. I need to learn how his department takes. You know, just taking a tour of the water treatment plant and seeing a few pretty things, that's, that's not it. I wanna know how it works, and how he's budgeting things, and what he's doing, and his, what his crew is doing day-to-day. Same thing with the, the sewer department, and I know that's not happening, and I, I believe hasn't happened in quite some time. But also being able to be out on the road project. But I think there's some responsibilities that also, you know, the other two members of the administrative team, the, the, the foreman and the operations person can also pick up on some of those responsibilities. I just don't think that it's been structured properly. Like, the positions are there, the ability is there, but nobody's ever actually put the pieces together properly to make it function correctly. I agree with that. And that's, that's just my thought.
Just one more question to continue, you think, what I hear in from you, it's, you know, it seems like you got a vision, future of it. You don't, you don't think you should reorganize all these positions? Maybe some, we don't need some of them, and just sit in there and try to figure...
Well, that's what he said. That's basically what he said.
Yeah, but...
I, I'm, I'm not thinking that we need to get...
On the camera and the orders.
I'm not thinking that we need to get rid of anything that we have. Uh, I'm thinking that we don't need to add to it at the moment. You know, I think that if we can, if we can restructure what we have, and solidify how we operate, and, and with what we already have for demands on the department, some of which are getting done, some of which aren't. But like I said, I think that's part, that's part of the structure of it, it's never been put together properly. You know, there's, there's some people, I believe, in my department, that, that, you know, are on the administrative team, that haven't been directed properly in how the, what their day-to-day goal is supposed to be in doing their job. I think that there's less of some things that they need to not do, and there's more of other things that they should be doing that are more important. And I think that follows too, right through the department, even with the union employees. Because there's guys that are making a bunch more money than this guy, that's going over here to deliver an envelope, but I got a guy that's, you know, a laborer that's making, he's just started. And yeah, he needs to grow his skillset and be out on the road learning, but if I gotta send somebody to Worcester to go pick up a part, I want the guy that's making 23 dollars an hour, not the guy that's making 28.
Right.
I want the, you know, I understand it's a municipal environment, but to me, it's also a business. In my head, it's a business. So it, it doesn't make sense to send the guy that's, doesn't make sense for me at 50-plus dollars an hour to drive to West Boylston to pick up a part for a truck, when I can send somebody that's making 24.
Alright, thank you. Councilor Lozlo?
Uh, I think, kinda like what I'm hearing, uh, I'm gonna use Jimmy Piardi's line. We had incompetence at the helm, it ran that way, and then all of a sudden, we're literally reactionary, to try and cure the problem by creating positions, and, and then HR got involved, and God forgive that, that mess. Um, so, moving forward, I'm gonna be pretty kinda simple. The guy's been here long enough to just sit in the chair. Give him some time. What we're hearing is a plan, and Joe, as you say, is a vision. If you wanna tweak that job, tweak that job. Because there's not a lot of councils that know what that job should be. We wanna support the right thing, which we always tried to under the previous director. And what we did was, we went down the wrong road. And now, all of a sudden, there's a newbie that has experience, you're there, I'm willing to sit back, and if you wanna tweak that position to make it better, we wanna utilize and reorganize your office. I'm in favor, I think the council needs to sit back and allow you to do what you have to do, and then after, you present what you need, and then we'll decide off of you. What happened was, we had people that didn't know what they were doing, and then we had counselors telling them what they should be doing. And the only guy that seemed to come forward that would make a note and get it done was Phil. And we didn't even know who he was, because he had catapulted into the position because of the revolving door. So while a revolving door is our worst enemy, it's start revolving, you're here, I think we should give you the time to reorganize and do whatever you think is correct. Come forward with your recommendations. I know this council's hungry for the right approach on how to handle these problems, and tonight, I think you put forward, uh, a good beginning of what we're doing wrong, or what isn't right. And let's go slow and recreate it, which I'm all favorite of.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go with Mr. Spine next.
I got a few things, but the first one is, I was the one who brought up this position over a year and a half ago. So my question to you would be then, if we're gonna go this route right now and put it on hold, because the HR department screwed this thing up since day one. So my question to you is, what is a short-term solution now? Because we are already three years behind, we're more than three years behind, but we can only go back three years on current trans permits that are pulled. What is, do you even have an answer? Can you get me an answer? The problem is, is this committee has been asking questions, and then on here for 22 months, been asking questions, meeting after meeting after meeting, and we get no answers.
Simple answer would be, um, you know, I can set up some time with Phil. Phil has the, uh, folder with all of the, uh, permits for the last, I believe, couple of years he still has on hand, until they expire and, you know, they get piled away. Him and I could sit down together and go through all those, and go out and see, you know, what, make notes of every one, what any issues are. And there again, it's oversight. Call out the contractors, or call out the utilities, say, this is what our, our guidelines are, this is what you did, this doesn't work. I, I know for a fact, today, just going to look at the trees that we, we looked at, Phil pointed out, well, there's a, there was a service trench right there from, uh, National Grid on Pleasant Street, there's two of them. And they're, I don't know, I think they might even be a couple hundred feet apart, you can see them both from one location. They're sunk down, inch and a half, both of them, you know, poor compaction, a rush job. And that's what you have everywhere. So I mean, if, if that's what we're looking for now, obviously, I'm, I'm still trying to, to get the, get the oars moving, but I will...
And I, I understand that, but...
I, I will take the time and sit down with Phil, and we'll go through the permits, and we'll make a list of them, and I'll, you know, see if I can have him, put them in some sort of a order, so we're not, you know, trekking back and forth across town. Even if we did, you know, a couple, you know, a half a dozen every other day or something like that, fit it into the schedule of time to get out of the, out of the office and go make sure we get something accomplished out on the streets. You know, we, we could start that process, and, you know, maybe go through them and see what's gonna expire first, and hit those first, so we, we're not missing the window. But I, I can, I will, I'll have that discussion with Phil tomorrow morning, we'll set some time, we'll set some time.
Because I, I have that same list that we're talking about.
Okay.
And I've driven by, and it, it's, like I say, that, that three-year timeframe that we have, it runs out every day, we're, we're losing one now, while the son of the town is there. The taxpayer is a, a foot in the bill for that, but my other thing... But my other thing is, and Rich, I know you knew and we discussed it last week when I talked to you, is there somehow, by possibly the next meeting, you can review our trench regulations and our bonds and give us some insight as far as how do we enforce it? You know, pull licenses, fees, fines?
Does the town impose fines for anything else? I, 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 so from my past experiences working in Connecticut, we had issues with our town because we didn't have a, a fee, like an enforcement officer. We had a zoning enforcement officer. We didn't have a, 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 a schedule of fines for.
I don't know if we do, but I mean, if, if not, maybe we create one. Or, you know, pull the guy's license.
I mean.
Hit the, hit the guy who's doing the job in the pocket by pulling his license.
It's very simple and I don't, it might be some of that stuff that's already in place that we can look into.
I believe there is.
Obviously, you know, that we as a town can choose, under good reason, uh, who we don't give permits to.
Congressman Lazo has his hand up. Did you wanna say something to this?
In past practice, you can go back to aim block, maybe you know the rule. If you don't go there and do it by the regular, I don't think we need new regulations, that's my opinion. Uh, the road to the road opening permit is explicit. Uh, they give you the document on the compaction, the overlay, out-of-paving, the emulsion. They go through the whole thing. The problem is, again, to the incompetency that has been talked about in past meetings, there's nobody there to grab the contractor and say, I'm gonna send him a letter, I'm gonna revoke your license. I'm gonna be honest with you, you wanna give me a hundred dollar fine? I'll have at you. Revoke my license, I'm gonna have a problem. So why not just leave it? Your license can be revoked after things are repeated. What more powerful fines is, is there? A hundred dollar fine, two hundred and three?
I think, I think a big part of that also is if, if, if you enforce something like that, it's gonna make it stable. Because nobody wants to, nobody's gonna wanna come into town and mess around. Nobody wants to miss out on the work that's available.
Right.
Because there's plenty of it. But if nobody's enforcing, okay, well, this guy, this guy, and this guy screwed up and nobody said it was the wrong thing to do.
All right.
As soon as you make an issue out of it, I think you'll fix that problem.
I'm gonna let, uh, Mr. Spine continue, he, he wasn't done yet. Go ahead.
What's gonna end up coming out of the trench regulations? Do we have a, a time definite date as far as Main Street, when that's gonna, when Lynch is gonna come in for that?
I think you sent me an email on that, I should've sent it to you.
I did.
Okay, so.
After Memorial Day, you said?
Yes. So the, the schedule, the, the agreed-upon punch list, uh, I believe there was a agreement made back in November. And the, the conversation was that they did not want them coming back too early because they were concerned about cold temperatures. So they settled on a date later May, early June. So I, I had a conversation with the, the oversight engineer and they were gonna pass along my recommendation to Lynch to schedule it af, cause we were right in that window. I wanted it to happen after Memorial Day. Cause the, the, the schedule was late May, early June. So I didn't want them to show up like the week before Memorial Day and start ripping the road up and have an active construction zone during Memorial Day festivities. So I, I didn't feel, you know, moving it off a week if their schedule was gonna hurt us in any way here before. So I'm, I'm still waiting for the exact, I haven't got a response from that. That was also the end of last week, but at the moment, that is the timeframe.
And the only other thing I wanted to bring up was, like everybody else tonight, is Newcom. Can we get some answers from them as far as all these roads they ripped up all last year, I mean, between glossy country club, Field Street, South Winter Water? I mean, is that one of these things they're gonna come back and pave in November again? I mean, are they finished what they're doing? I, I, I'm assuming, and it's not the right way to go, but I'm assuming this whole end of town, they're, they're done on. And then, I mean, I think we need to probably sit down and figure out how the pavements are gonna go, like, like George said, on South Street. Are we gonna make them do the whole road?
I think the, the, they have to wait a certain, in, in matters of regulations, they have to wait a certain amount of time before they can do the permanent.
And I agree, it, it's, but that's what I'm saying, the glossy and field and all that, they're way over that time.
Right. And I think that's also gonna come down to, um, National Grid, correct? It's all their contracting for National Grid.
Right.
So I can.
The other issue with them is they don't even get a great, a licenses.
Well, that was also brought to my attention.
They don't have to.
Why? Our regulations. Our regulations says they have to.
I, I know, I think, I asked that question a million times. I think for some reason, because they're a public utility, they.
You look, out of, out of towns, they have their bricklayer, I don't know what license they call, bricklayer's license. And then they're good for thirty days and it's like Ever Source, Ever Source in Connecticut, every thirty days, they're renewing their, uh, license to open up the road. I mean, he would know being.
That's a permit, not a license.
Permit, they get a permit. You, you guys know what I'm talking about.
Okay, that's a road opening permit.
We do too.
And they, and we, and, and in our case, it's good for the year. But other towns and other communities, they're good for thirty days and they're charged. Like a road place in South Street, they're charged a couple hundred dollars every thirty days. And how they enforce them to do the road properly is they pull a license and it stops, the job stops. And it's just, again, enforcement by our community, our.
All right, Mr. Pioppi, you've been very patient, go right ahead.
Now, I'd just like to make a comment that I agree with Scott's overview of the situation and I agree with Rich's approach, we need to give him a chance. I mean, I don't think Selfridge's problem has been personnel, I think it's been leadership. I think it's been emphasis on the wrong thing. I think if Rich is able to redirect some of those people's, uh, emphasis, we'll be fine. And, you know, the, the other thing is, a lot of eyes tearing. I can tell you from a contractor who's worked in the towns that I don't know a soul. When you work somewhere where no one stops, you get the sense that no one cares. When you, when you work that anyone stops, you get the sense that someone cares. And typically, typically, it's not the director, it's the foreman and people at that level that stop. And if they want to see you do a good job, they stop and develop a relationship with you, let you know their expectations, help you with finding things you, you know, when you're not in a familiar area of development. That, that's what works the best. That does, I can tell you in Selfridge that does not happen.
Well, hopefully it'll happen in the future.
And that's all overtaken, you know, tearing is contagious and that's all overtaken.
Mr. Lazo?
I just wanna compliment the DPW director on his plan. Um, before you got here, I'm just gonna throw this one out. Four oh two Town Street, I got a call from a resident. I went down there, I'm not a DPW worker or anything like that. Went down, this out-of-town contractor ripped up the road. There was gravel, rocks all over the road like this, not hatched on a Friday afternoon. Okay? No oversight was there. I personally draped up the, the boulders, boomed off the street and I used his cones and put them in the road because there are motorcycles there going by and all that. There was no oversight at the time. But I like what you, what you said you were gonna do and everything and I, I'm just gonna compliment you on your future plans.
Okay, hold on, I'm gonna go with Congressman Steve, did you have something?
Oh, I just wanted to point out that I, I just sent you the BILO one dash one eleven. This is our, which is the list of things that are subject to non-criminal disposition. It's a fairly long list.
All right.
And it says specifically that any regulation of any municipal officer, board, or department may be penalized by non-criminal disposition.
Mr. Pioppi, you got something last, final to say?
You know, I, and I'm not downplaying, uh, that you're telling the trench of Town Street, but in scale, and that we have, we have a full-time inspector on South Street. That, that job is beyond like, it, it's, beyond anything I've seen of some condition they're allowed to leave it in. The workmanship, the methods, the, the quality. And we, we're paying time bond for a full-time inspector to sit in this town. Let the contractor have a people, so. But, you know, the boss needs to show up and, but nobody asks for expectation.
All right, thank you. Mr. Congressman Lazo?
I just have to, nobody was around to yell at, so.
Congressman Lazo?
I agree with Congressman Lazo. You just got here, you need time to prove, but I hope you do what you say. And not, now because of the new, you oppress us, you say all the good word and then when you feel a little bit more comfortable, you forget everything you said. I hope, I like what you said, I like your plan. Uh, we want better Selfridges. It's not, we're not getting, for our personal thing, nothing. We just like to live in town, it's accessible and everything is done the right way. We hear a lot of story in the past, people tell you the good word and then they forget. So I hope you move forward and you approve it for us. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So before we adjourn, unless you have anything else, I am gonna schedule another meeting in May. Some of the residents from Ellis Road asked if they could come here. So just thought I'd let you know, probably second week in May. All right? Motion to adjourn?
Sorry.
All right, all those in favor? Thank you very much, thank you for attending.
Bye.
Thank you, everyone.